Well, I'm excited. We're gonna do our best, we are. We're gonna try to get through this thing, have conversation, have a good time. I said a minute ago, we're not gonna go through any boring shitty government presentation. And we're gonna try to make this as much fun, as interactive as we can have it. Okay? So let's start diving into this thing and see what we have. Well, first of all, there's three, there's three prongs to our training tonight. Three prongs. One's student performance. You'll find out through a bill called Senate Bill 1566 that was passed in the 85th session. This was the 86th, the 85th, that really owned in on school boards and what your responsibilities are. And it's in statute. Another prong is support, and the third prong is governance. Okay? So let's dive into it and let's see what it is. Orientation. The definition of an orientation is the act of orienting or the state of being oriented, an adjustment or adaptation to a new environment, situation, custom, or set of ideas. Many of you are in the business world. Some of you are retired educators or still in it. I'm telling you, we've tried to tell people in certain circles this. The education world is not the same as the business world. It's not. You can't run it the same. It isn't governed the same. Money is different. Personnel is different. Education world is different. And if you haven't been around the education world much, or maybe you think you have, I think, hopefully tonight will help you understand it's different and why it's different, and it's not different in a bad way. Okay? Not in a bad way. Okay. One of the things about education, arts acronyms. All right? And this is just some of the acronyms. Okay? You've got some districts that have their own programs and have a whole nother set of acronyms, right? So even I don't know all these acronyms. So don't worry, and if there's a meaning or something going on and you don't understand, don't be embarrassed to raise your hand and say, "What does that mean?" Because trust me, I mean, obviously it means something. So don't be concerned. Ask. Ask. So let's talk about it. Let's talk about the first thing, governance, especially with what just ended, and today the governor signed House Bill 3. He signed it today. Now, the interesting thing is, they don't even know what's all in it yet. Well, they don't. They don't know, they know what's in it, but they don't know what it all means. So you've got superintendents and staffs, and you've probably already, maybe even attended one workshop, some, one budget workshop, and you're trying to set a budget, and the superintendents don't even, and the finance folks don't even know the different, you know, what concerns, define an administrator. Right? Of course, you know, but they don't even know. You know, and, and we got to talking about guys, superintendent, what about federal programs and where that ties into a salary? You may have a teacher that's paid partly out of general revenue or funds, and you may want paid out of federal funds part of the day, so their salary combined, but it may be, if you have an eight period day at the high school, it could be three eighths one area and, I mean, or three eights and then five eights in another area, and now where, where do you pay for it? I mean, how, and how's that tie into salaries and the House Bill 3? They released a salary schedule today, at least now superintendents can get going on that a little bit. And it was significant. But for smaller school districts, it's gonna be interesting to see how that plays out. It's gonna be interesting to see how that plays out. And 41 districts. How many of y'all are 41 districts? You know what I mean by 41 districts? You're property wealthy. That's a property wealthy district. Don't call it a rich district. All right? Has nothing to do with, with, you know, income as far as the student body or the average household. It's a property wealthy district. Cause you have, like, Malakoff is not necessarily a wealthy district as far as average household income, but they're property wealthy because of mineral deposits. So it's just, it's interesting, it's an interesting dichotomy of how that all works. But with the new finance plan, we'll see how that shakes out as too. So let's dive into it. Governance. I'm sorry, I've been known to chase rabbits, so don't let me chase rabbits. And I've also been known, y'all ever heard of Gallagher, the comedian? You know, the people on the first two rows wear ponchos? I'm sorry, I forgot my ponchos. So I'll do my best not to get too fired up and, um, all right. Let's talk about the school board, the Board of Trustees. There's a couple of things in here you need to understand. A body corporate. All right? What does that mean? Can anybody answer that?
The group.
The group. You have power as a group. And that's the only time. We'll talk more about that in a little bit. And your duty is to oversee the management of the district. Now, who is the manager of the district? The superintendent. It's not your job to run a campus. In fact, in Senate Bill 15, Senate Bill 1566, there's a part of why that rule that says board members have to check in at this campus office and even be wary of that, it's because of something happened in another district about three or four years ago. Because there's a board member going on two campuses and going to teachers and going to classrooms. So, I mean, anytime you see a law that's been made, normally it's because somebody's done something to make that law be written. Okay? And so it's important to understand that you, as a board member, have authority and power when you meet during a legally called meeting. Sometimes board members, it may be the same with city councilmen, but board members go in with this idea that they're gonna change the, you know, the world, they're gonna change the, they go in with an agenda. And then they get on there and they find out, once you're a board member, that's not necessarily the case. You have opportunities to share ideas, you have opportunities to be heard, but then the law can dictate that on when and where you can do that. Texas Ed Code 11.002. School district and charter school created in accordance with the law of this state have the primary responsibility for implementing the state's system of public education, ensuring student performance in accordance with this code. And I'll give you the link in a little bit, but it's very important that you have access to where you need to get information. Texas Association of School Boards is there for you. If you have a question, they have a number you can call. You have your policy online that you can go look at your policy, and you can see, because sometimes you find out that certain things are done because the law says superintendent has to do it this way, especially when it comes to discipline matters, or especially when it comes to personnel, or things like that. There's things that law says you have to do. Okay? I won't ever forget, well, like, my second meeting, I had a board member that wanted us to get rid of a teacher. That teacher had been there a few years. And I said, "I can't do that." He said, "Well, why not?" He was a retired airline pilot. He said, "Well, why not? They're not doing the job, get rid of them." I said, "It's not that easy. There's a process." "Well, what kind of process do you need if somebody's not doing the job?" I said, "Well, there's a process, and the law says this is how we've gotta go." "Well, that's not right." I said, "Well, it's the law, and we're not gonna break the law." Okay? And let's see, that was my first, no, that was my second meeting as a superintendent. All powers and duties not specifically delegated by statute to the TEA or the State Board of Education are reserved for the trustees. Agency may not substitute its judgment for the unlawful exercise of powers and duties named in the statute. Follow the law. Bottom line. Now, are you gonna know it? Are you gonna know the law like your superintendent is? You can research it. If you wanna spend time reading statute, more power to you, but that's why you have the person, that's why you hire the superintendent. Okay? That's why you hire. So how do you oversee the management of the district? I think this is very, very important when it comes to a school board member understanding This is all, this is all part of Senate Bill 1566. Okay? 85th session. Board of Trustees of independent school district or the governing body of an open or open charter school shall provide, now here's a key word, when you look at law, does it say "shall" or does it say "may?" "Shall." So you don't have a choice. You "shall," okay, as it says right up there, provide oversight regarding student academic achievement, strategic leadership, and maximizing how well they do on the football field. No, that's not on there. The basketball court is not on there. It's student academic achievement. That's your job, to make sure that happens. And you hold the superintendent accountable that it gets it done. Okay? I talked about that minute ago. You're a body corporate. A trustee has power, am I on your way? A trustee has power only when participating in a legally called board meeting. Now, sometimes this is where you can get in trouble. When you're at the event, and who, who are you talking to? Okay? Are y'all hanging out together? Y'all have Christmas dinner together? Just, just together? By yourself? That's not wise. Now, if you have a dinner with superintendent and other administrators, that's one thing, or if you're at a school event, but I think you know where I'm going with that. You gotta be very leery of that. But how many of y'all, again, I said this a minute ago, have already been in an event and you've already had people come up to you and start expressing concern? You need to change this in Tioga. We got a high school now, so hey, we're gonna do this, right? You know, how do you, sorry, I didn't, didn't mean to put you on the spot, but you know, it would be, you know, we're all, I mean, it doesn't matter if it's Tioga, the D I S D, I mean, or Grand Prairie, all points in between. Again, you're gonna experience that. Okay? You're gonna experience that. But you only have power to do anything when you meet together as a body corporate. So what are the powers and duties of trustees? Budget policy, board policy. Now, what will happen, especially after this legislative session, you will start getting board policy updates. I don't know by now, what number are they on, about 100 and? Yeah. So what, yeah, so you'll start getting things, and a lot of times the law dictates what that policy is. But you may have some, some wiggle room to, to put a "may" or a "shall," or a, or you know, or how you wanna implement a policy. And that's where you rely on your superintendent, that's where you can ask questions as well. That's one of your primary functions is to make policy. Now, understand, when it comes to make policy, at the end of that book, you also have what's called, what, superintendents? Is it called administrative procedures?
Also that you're legal and local, you need to understand the difference.
Well, that's true. All right? We'll talk about that in a second, but, but the thing is, one of the things you'll get when it comes to administrative regulations or things like how, how are things carried out? Our handbooks. How do we elect cheerleaders? Okay? Some folks actually have that for your approval. You know, some school districts, it just depends on which school district, what they're, what they like. Okay? But you have policy, administrative guidelines. Now, what we said a second ago, as far as local and legal, those are the, the local policies are things on how you do them unique to your school district. Legal is pretty much statute, but local is where you can take and have some local leeway in it. And you have legal and local. Okay? So you do have both. Great, again, really, in your spare time, go to your website, look up board policy, and you can see all the different things that that governs, and it says legal and local. All you go, hit it, and it pops right up. It's, it's a great resource. Budget and finance. Again, y'all are in the middle of that right now. How many of y'all are in July 1 budget? We were. Bless your heart. Right now, it's tough. All right? These September 1 budgets have a little more time. So you, you're in the middle of all that right now, and y'all approve the budget and set the tax levy. You know, that infamous tax levy, right? The highest taxing entity on a person's tax bill is what? Schools. It's a shame, though, that all the money collected under the school tax doesn't go to schools, because it doesn't. So if you pay a dollar, some folks will be at what, a dollar three now? Or, no, 97 cents, or whatever it is, whatever, whatever the reduction is, compression is.
Dollar six.
Dollar six. Okay? It might have been a dollar 17, but it's now goes to a dollar six. Whatever it is that rate is, that tax rate, that doesn't all go to schools when that's collected in the school district all across the state of Texas. Okay? Goes to the general fund. Schools only get part of that. So that's an important thing to remember and to educate your constituencies and let them know that and understand that. Okay? Cause a lot of people don't know that. So budget, we'll talk more about it in a minute. Employment. Employment, property management, and other, and we'll, and we'll talk about that in a second here with all that. I got off on a little bit. All right, let's talk policy. You may adopt rules and bylaws necessary to carry out the powers and duties provided by subsection 11.151. You adopt goals and objectives based on information presented by the superintendent in conformity with local community expectations. That's your local policy. Because expectations are a little bit different in how than they are in Capell, than they are in Frisco, than they are in D I S D, than they are in Palmer or Rivercrest High School or ISD. You know, I mean, it just, you just don't, it, it's different. It's different. But it's important for superintendents to understand, you do have a constituency. Okay? You do have constituents. So, so you, that's where you are, that bridge between them and the community. You adopt a budget, you levy taxes, if somebody wants to donate something to you, you have to approve it. All right? You select a repository every couple of years. Things you do when it comes to budget and finance. Now, it's important to understand, you gotta pass the budget before you set your tax rate. So knowing your tax rate, and that's gonna be tricky coming up, because now the cap. There's gonna be a whole lot of things that's gonna be different. I'm anxious to see, and I haven't studied it all yet myself, but it's gonna be interesting to see how this all plays out. It's gonna be interesting to see how it all plays out. You employ the superintendent. Look at that second bullet. And this is where I think sometimes we've gotta be reminded. You employ other contract personnel upon recommendation of the superintendent. A campus person will be recommended to the superintendent. They recommend, now, if you've gotten, if you've got an issue with something that superintendent's doing, and if they're normally doing their job, they're gonna kinda let you know what's going on ahead of time. Don't walk into a meeting that they're expecting to do the hiring and then all of a sudden object to it. This is where it's important to have communication with the superintendent, and it's very important that if you've got a concern, you go, or whatever the chain of command is, if it's this, if you go straight to the superintendent as a board member, fine. You may need to go through the board president. However, your school board has that chain of command, that you respect that chain of command, and you go and express your concern. I had this question asked the other night when I did this. Well, what if you don't like the hire? Do you vote for it, so it's a 7-0 vote? Or do you vote against it? I'm telling you, I'm not gonna tell you how to do that. But if you express a concern with that kind of vote, or any vote, and it's a nay vote, I think you need to have, it needs to be such conviction that you're willing to share it in an open meeting. It needs to be shared why it's a no vote. Because then people will understand. I think what happened, there's so many 7-0 votes when it comes to school boards, I mean, some folks will say, "I'm getting on the school board because we got too many 7-0 votes." Well, there's probably a reason for that, but are you willing to be that one no vote and be convicted enough to be able to share why? So I think that's very important to remember. Very important to remember. Adopt an employment policy. Now, which ensures, and it talks about this, we're at the time of year now, folks, let me say, um, we're getting ready to be the crucial point. There's a certain number of days that a person can resign from a school district, and the, and the school district they are leaving, they can say, "No, you're not going." It's normally around July 4th, July 3rd, July 4th. It's 45 days, I believe, from the first day of school, of the district that you wanting to leave. So if, if that happened, and I'll be honest with you, most superintendents, if somebody really wants to leave that bad, you probably don't want them. But then there becomes the problem of filling that position. And I don't know how your school districts do it, but when it comes to hiring folks, y'all've gotta approve them. But you can give the superintendent the authority to offer him a contract and get him signed before the next school board meeting. Y'all meet every two weeks? How often do y'all meet? Two weeks? Y'all meet two weeks? Once a month? Okay. Once a month? Okay, just monthly. Okay. You know, some of your larger districts do meet two times a month. Okay? But, but you give that person that's in charge of hiring that authority, that's a good, I'm just telling you, coming from a superintendent's point of view, who's had to hire people during the summer, and the pickings get slim starting right now, there are a shortage of teachers. Okay? But right now is the time that it's tough. If they can find one, please give them the authority to get them done. Get them signed and inked up, and then they'll, you'll approve them after the fact. But you do have the, you do have the authority to allow the superintendent to do that. And now's the time when you've gotta do it. Okay? More about policy on, on employment. You must have a policy that requires principal approval, campus approval. Again, what I said earlier about law, most laws are created when what? Somebody's done something that, okay? So you have, what caused a rule like this or a law like this is a superintendent hiring somebody and saying, "Oh, they're teaching, they're teaching on your campus whether you like it or not." Okay? That's the whole reason why, why you see principal approval. You have different leadership styles, but I, of course, I was one of those, hire good people, gather away, and let them do the job. Now, sometime that bites in the rear, but, but I believe that. And, and I, I mean, that's my job as a superintendent. You hire the folks that are gonna do the job, and if they don't do the job within a year, they're gonna be probationary, then we have to have principals or folks and authority that are strong enough to make that call. If you hear it's not getting done now, and again, that's a matter of, I don't know how y'all will do your chain of command there in D I S D. It may be through your board president. So you may need to go to the board president and say, "Hey, I'm hearing this." The board president then relay it to Dr. Anders Hosa or whoever's in charge of that particular group of administrators or teachers, and then they'll, because here's the deal. You hear it, but it could be rumor, or it could be an upset parent that disband their child, or it can be a child who is upset with that teacher, and they're gonna do what they can to get that teacher in trouble. So I think it's not to overreact, just you hear it, and first thing you do, and I'm probably getting out of sync here a little bit, but you, I'm glad, that's a great question because we eventually have to answer it. The first thing, when you hear a parent or somebody complain, the first thing you do is, have you spoken to their, have they gone and spoken to their supervisor? When people find out that you'll go around the chain of command, then you've got problems. What you, as a board member, must do, the first time somebody says something, you must say, "Have you followed the proper chain of command? If it's an upset teacher, have you talked to your principal?" Now, let me tell you, I had done a board training recently, and I was, I, I, because they had a situation like this. And it was said, "Well, what if that, that, that person is scared of retribution?" Because I said, "They need to go meet with them." What, what if they're scared of retribution? I said, "Well, tell them to put their big boy panties on." Because if you got an issue, be adult enough, be the adult, and go express your concern. That's biblical. But you need somebody with you, right? To go. And I think that's an important thing. Okay? Because we, I mean, again, it's talking about, I mean, we gotta be the example. Okay? And so that, that's something I, I've had to tell people before. You gotta understand, too, that Grand Prairie, I mean, y'all, y'all are a whole different animal to a lot of people in, in, in your governance and how, how you do it. So I would imagine you probably, there's probably, you, you have an assistant superintendent or executive or whatever of just personnel that bring, and they may bring the recommendation. I mean, I don't know how you do it there, but, or the superintendent may hire, maybe consent agenda, I mean, I don't know how y'all do it. Every place does that differently. Okay? Lot of times, an executive session is when I would allow the principal to come in and talk about the person they're recommending. Okay? So principals were able to sell their, you know, get their say-so in it. To me, that gave them an opportunity to speak in front of the board, right? But it also helped sell their passion for wanting to hire that person. So that's, that's how I dealt with it. People do it differently. That's just how I did it. Okay? All right. Does not restrict the ability of a district employee to communicate directly with a board member about the operation of the district. With the exception of a hearing or appeal, that would be inappropriate pending final decision of the board. And let me say this. If you, and most superintendents are gonna let you know what's going on if there's an issue with an employee. If that employee approaches you, you might want to back away, because there's very real possibility, if that employee's being that aggressive in the situation, there very well could be a grievance. So don't get involved in it. Just say, "I'm sorry, you probably don't need to talk to me about this right now." And that'll save a lot of grief and heartache down the road. Okay? So just be aware of that as well. All right, property. Property management. You acquire and hold real property in the name of the district? Sell minerals and land belonging to the district? Authorize the sale of district property? And exercise eminent domain? Okay? You have the authority to do that. You have the authority to do that under statute. So, um, you'll be getting, um, I'm trying to remember now, just off the top of my head. At one point in the year, you will get the property tax deliqued rolls. Okay? You will have the name of that owner. You might be shocked to see the name of that owner. But you as a board member to keep that to yourself. Okay? That shouldn't be broadcast all over the place. But, you know, I mean, it's public record, but again, that's one of those things you just want to be careful about. If you have property that is deliqued so many years, then that can be sold at the courthouse steps. And then you get your actual tax levy, the back taxes on that, then get paid to you. And all the other taxing entities that are owed that money. That's part of the agreement normally in those situations. So that's part of the, of, of, of that as well. And you'll have to accept all that money as well. If somebody donates something, you approve it. If it's land, whatever it might be. So, property management, yes?
What type of scenario would come up where you would not approve? Some money being given?
Not very many. I mean, really, I mean, if it's to that point, these guys have already done their job. They, they know what's going on with it. And, and they'll make you informed and, because it doesn't just happen. You know, normally they're approached, the school district is approached, superintendent meets with people. They get the attorney involved. They make sure everything's the way it's supposed, and then they present it to y'all for approval. That's normally how that works. Yep. Questions? Good, good question. Order set and certify elections. You have that authority. Now, statute has limited in, when some of those can be done. But still, that's what you do. Uh, if you've been to a board, your first board meeting, y'all have certified the election. Okay? The vote counts and all that kind of stuff. You can be sued in the name of the district. Did you know that? Hmm. All right. Contract for educational services. Region 10. Y'all, I'm just telling you right now, Region 10 is awesome. I actually had the honor of speaking in front of the Senate Ed Committee back when the Senate, it used to be the House was anti-education and the Senate was pro-public education. And now it's flip-flop. So back when the Senate was against public education, I had the great opportunity to go speak on behalf of Region 10 and the service centers to the Senate Ed Committee. Because to a smaller school district especially, Region 10 and service centers in the state in general are their lifeblood. It's their lifeblood. So, so there's a contract for educational services, I mean, again, it's a certain amount of money for certain things they do. They meet with the superintendent, say, these are what certain packages will cost. They put all it together and then they let you know about it. Charge fees. If you have, for example, I was talking here, the, the finance, uh, session seminar was here yesterday, and I was talking to a district. It's a forty-one district, a property wealthy district in, kind of near the middle of Dallas. And, uh, you know, they are getting ready to lose a whole bunch of money. Because of the way the new finance system's worked up, they still allow growth in there, but their, their growth is pretty limited. They're pretty landlocked. And he was concerned about the millions they're going to lose over the next four or five years. Well, the subject of fees for athletic things and booster clubs, buying things is going to be a big deal for them. They can, they'll afford it. But you're talking about millions of dollars that they won't regain with the new finance system. So it's going to be interesting to see. But you can charge fees for kids to play sports or to be in a band or, or whatever it might be. You probably shouldn't have school uniforms in there because technically it's called standardized dress. But you can do that under certain conditions. And then at a board meeting, the board must provide, again, there's the word, must or shall provide the superintendent opportunity to present oral or written recommendation for, on any item that has to be voted on by the board. Why do you think that's the case? What if the board, not that board members would do this, but kind of got together over here, you know, sometime and talked on the phone maybe, and kind of got four folks in favor or something, and showed up at the board meeting and just said, no, we're not doing that. But, but, but as superintendent, but, what, sorry. That can't happen. He's got to have an opportunity to present an argument for it. Okay? That's in your, that's in your handout. Texas Education Code can be found at that particular link. And, um, again, it's something that I think is very important for you to get familiar with. Okay? Because again, that's what governs public education. All right. Senate Bill 122, as of 2013, board members can be removed from office for official misconduct, incompetency, or alcohol intoxication. So don't go anywhere on your way home tonight. Go home straight. All right? Um, No.
Anywhere, if you're intoxicated, anywhere.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. Not drinking socially, but intoxicated. In other words, you know, you're drunk. Yeah. That, that, that's not, that's not, that's not, social drinking, that's not what it says. You've got to be, by intoxication, it's talking about you're above that point, what is it? No, 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 you know the difference between the Baptist and the Methodist, don't you? When they go fishing? All right, the Baptists do it on the boat, the Methodist do it after they get back. That's the, that's the difference. Yes. Yes, the only way, exactly. Yes. Yep. You know, you heard the story about the Baptist preacher, the pre, the Methodist preacher and the Presbyterian preacher? You got me started now. You heard about that joke? Well, they're out fishing one day? They're out fishing one day. All right? So, so they're talking and, and the Baptist minister says, you know, guys, I, I've got this issue, you know, with, with, with drinking. I, I shouldn't, but I do. So I just want to let y'all know about it. So the Methodist preacher says, you know, I've really got this issue with gossip. I mean, with, um, not with gossip, with, um, well, I said, that just tore me up right there. The, uh, I've got this issue with, uh, you know, talking, you know, bad about people, you know, and then going out and preaching that morning or whatever. Said, ma'am, will y'all pray for me about that? So that's the Baptist, the Presbyterian goes, well, guys, I've got a problem with gossip, and I really can't wait till I get back to town to tell everybody about y'all. See, I messed up the joke, didn't I? Okay. All right. Um, you have an access, you have access to school district information. So if you want to, if there's something specifically you want to know, now, you know, understand there are some limitations on that, but also understand, what I used to do as a superintendent, I would let everybody know you're requesting that information. Not everybody, the board. Yeah, rephrase that. No, I, I'd get on the phone service, hey, to the district, I just wanted to let y'all know. No, I'm just kidding. No, I would let the board know that you're requesting that information. I, I think it's that, because they, they need to know. Again, when do you have the most authority? When do you have authority? When you're a body corporate. Okay? And I think sometimes, and again, be respectful of the time it takes to get that information. Because your school folks are doing school business. And it takes time to do that. Okay? Fifteen duties and powers of the superintendent. Okay? Number one, we'll go through this pretty quickly. Assuming administrative responsibility and leadership for the planning, operations, supervision, evaluation of the education program service facilities of the district and for the annual performance appraisal of the district staff. Whose job is it to run the school district day to day? Superintendent's. Whose job is it, is it to evaluate the staff? Their supervisor through the chain of command. Right? So, so it's very important. Again, that's not your job as a board member. And I'll say this again. Some of you will hear, if you have not already, you will hear from people in the community that this teacher did this, or this teacher is doing this or not doing that. Just whatever your chain of command is within your district with the school board, follow it, let the superintendent know what's being heard. If there's something to it, they'll take care of it. If it's not, he'll let you know it, or she'll let you know it as well. Okay? Because you will hear it. Again, depends on where the source is coming from. Right? But the principals responsible for the staff of the campus, superintendent's responsible, central office, depending on how your structure is in your central office, they're responsible for your district staff, or your district leadership, campus leadership. One of the things with the new evaluation system that is now a couple of years old, uh, those that have just retired from teaching, it's, there's a lot more, um, you know, I don't want to say check the boxes, but there's not, a lot less, um, objectivity, a lot more subjectivity to it now. And, um, the toughest thing for teachers and the new, and it's going to be the same way with accountability system. It's been the same way, and it's going to be the same way with the new accountability financial system and the first system. When we always thought that exceeds expectations or, or this high grade was what standard, well, now, you may still be doing a great job, but it may be a B. Or it may be a, you know, another level down, right, teachers? You're doing a great job, but the way the system's set up now is it's not going to be as high as you're used to. And let me tell you, teachers have a hard time with that. Well, they do. Because they think that you think they're failing, and that's not the case at all. It's just the way the new system is set up, that's the way it is. Um, we'll talk about it in a minute, but when it comes to financial accountability, it's called the FIRST rating system. Same thing's getting ready to happen with the new FIRST system in 2021. Because if you're graded down on one level, then it's knocking you down. Where, where everybody's getting superior in, in their financial ratings, it won't be happening. It's not saying they're not doing a bad job taking care of their money. Or you're not, you know, y'all are doing a great job of that, but because of the way the new system's set up, it's going to give that appearance. Assuming administrative authority and responsibility for the assignment and evaluation of all the personnel of the district other than superintendent. Superintendent duties. Always in compliance with standards for school facilities. Is everything ADA compliant? You know, we had a deal near the end of my time, we had some sidewalks that I believe were a half an inch at the joints, difference. And guess what? That's out ADA compliance. We had to rip them up, fix them. Okay? All kinds of things. Now, you have stuff that, some stuff that's grandfathered in. Uh, but, but still, uh, that's something that superintendent's responsible for, make sure that's done. Initiating the termination or suspension of an employee or the non-renewal of an employee's term contract. An important term there is this right here. I don't know if that'll sign up there or not. Term. You have probationary, you have term. There was a time when you had something that was called a continuing contract. That's almost like tenure for a college professor. That's what a continuing contract, but those are almost all gone. There's not very many of those around anymore if they still around. But when it comes to terminating an employee, that is a term. Now, what determines a term? There's a couple of standards. Normally, it's on the third year of a person's employment, they've been in probationary. If they're a new teacher, they've been probationary. And that time you can, you cannot rehire, but attorneys will tell you it's still good to have documentation for it if you don't. Even though by probationary standards, you can. Term, however, you better have documentation. You better have documentation. That building principal is, or whatever, the supervisor of that person must have the documentation to back it up and get ready. It's probably, a lot of times, it's going to be a grievance hearing. Okay? If you're, if you're not renewing a term contract. All right, number five. Managing day-to-day operations of the district. Including implementing and monitoring plans, procedures, programs, systems to achieve clearly defined desired results in major areas of district operation. Campus plan, all the things that you're going to be seeing campus and district plans here in a few months. In other words, this is what our scores were, this is where we want to be, and this is what we're going to do to correct the areas of weakness and grow the things of our strength, areas of our strengths. Okay? You will approve those plans. And that plan will also tell you where that money's coming from. Local money, federal money, or whatever it might be. It'll explain all that. Okay? But it's his job to make sure that's carried out. Those plans are carried out. Are herped, depending on whatever the case may be. Preparing and submitting to the board trustees a proposed budget. We've talked about that, correct? We don't need to go any more of that. We talked about this earlier. Preparing policy recommendations for you. Again, you will see these probably prior to the meeting in your board packets. And you'll see, and if there's areas of, of, of discussion or where y'all can determine whether it's a shall or a may, or whatever that may be, uh, then y'all can discuss that accordingly. Lot of times, the superintendent will give you a recommendation and the reasons why. Developing or causing to be developed appropriate administrative regulations to implement policies established by the board of trustees. How is that going to be, how is that, how is that particular policy going to be carried out? Providing the leadership for the attainment of student performance in the district. Again, what are you responsible for? Making policy, hire for our superintendent, and what? Uh, some other thing, but I mean, really, when, when Senate Bill fifteen sixty-six, what? Budget finance? Outcomes. Yep, student outcome. What, the, making sure you're overseeing, that superintendent's taking care of their job of, of making sure the students are achieving academically. Now, what does that look like? It depends on what district you're in. I mean, it just depends. Just depends. Organizing district central administration is what they do. Consulting with district-level committees required under Section eleven point two five two. Uh, you know, I mean, superintents will tell you, they have, they have a district committee, they have, um, you know, and then there's, there's committees, it's almost like a Baptist church, committees upon committees, right? Uh, you've got, uh, the calendar committee. You know, who's going to set the calendar next year? That's a, let me tell you, folks, that's a sword I wasn't going to die on. Okay? So, you know, I just asked, would be done before Memorial Day? All right? And not have school on Good Friday? All right? The rest, I mean, I actually didn't like a full week at Thanksgiving. But I certainly wasn't going to go to fight on it. Not anymore, because once you do it, it's done. You're not ever getting it back. But to get the number of days into the fall semester where they're equitable, especially when we had the uniform start date, it was hard to do. It's hard to do. One of the good things about district innovation, you can start when, you can move it up. Commerce ISD actually made the news two years ago. They started August eighth. I mean, it was like really early in August. All right? Uh, they didn't do that second year. Number twelve, ensuring adoption of student code of conduct is required under Section thirty-seven oh one, enforcement of that code of conduct. Again, Chapter thirty-seven, the discipline code tells, I mean, if a, if a student gets, you know, charged, not convicted, charged with certain state jail felonies, I mean, they go to the D A E P. No questions. Period. Okay? Um, sometimes parents don't like that. But it's statute. But there's other things that determine, things from in-school suspension, uh, you know, removal of a student, whatever case it might be, a lot of times you'll, you'll approve that. And normally, dress code's included in all that adoption. Adoption and enforcement of other student disciplinary rules and procedures as necessary. All right? What, truly, what, what are we going to do with that second grader? That's an habitual discipline problem. Most superintents are going to tell you, this is our plan. Because then sometimes statute tells you what you can and can't do, the law, the special ed law, if it's, if it's a child's special ed student. We had a student back one time that required a teacher and an aide for one student. And in our size district, that was a pretty big hit financially. But we had to do it. Okay? So that happens sometimes, just be aware of that. Superintendent has to report, make reports. Provide joint leadership with the board of trustees to ensure that responsibilities of the board and superintendent's team are carried out. Have a team of eight training, you'll all have that. Okay? You'll all do that. Superintents will get together, and everybody needs to be there. It needs to be a night when all eight of you can be there. All come in, or whoever the trainer is comes in, and does a team of eight training. But you've got to do that. But it's important that y'all understand, y'all are a team. Y'all are a team of eight. Performing any other duties assigned by the action of the board of trustees. Alright? There may be expectations you have of your superintendent. You expect them to be at every extracurricular event. Most superintents are going to do it anyway. Just because, especially your smaller school districts. You just go. Alright? But some people will put that and say, you need to be there. We expect you at all these things. And whatever, that's just one example. Collaboration between the board and superintendent. You shall work together to advocate for the high achievement of all district students. I think the key word there is "all." But then again, as public educators, that's to me what I take great pride in. Is that we are going to educate all the students. Okay? Not just the ones that can afford here, there, everywhere. We're going to get all of them, because all of them deserve an opportunity to create education. Create and support connections with community organizations, provide community-wide support for the high achievement of all district students. Again, superintendent, who's the connection to the community for the superintendent? Y'all are. Y'all are the elected officials. Okay? Provide educational leadership for the district, including leadership in developing the district vision statement and long-range educational plan. What do you want a graduating senior from Frisco High School to look like? What qualities do you want that student to have when they graduate from hell? It's important that y'all are all on the same page for that. It may mean some extra training. Trust me, it's going to be more than one month, not, one night a month. So get ready for it. But, but it may require more training to develop a vision for your district, a plan for your district, what, you know, whatever it takes to get everybody on the same page. Because what comes out of this group of eight will filter in. The attitude of the rest of the district can be made or broken by this group of eight. Because if you, if you let the negativity affect your attitude, it changes that dynamic. I understand. Not disagreements, but negativity. There's a big difference. Big difference. Establish district-wide policies, annual goals, we've talked about that, but that are tied to the district vision statement. Again, whatever it is you say, this is what our vision statement is, our goals need to be tied to that. Support the professional development of principals, teachers, and other staff. And what does that look like? Well, serve breakfast the first day of work for the school year and the last day of work. Be there in a supportive role for them. What can you do, and superintents can help with this? Something, a small thing that we can afford, but you see some districts doing this now. We couldn't afford $1,000 at Christmas. You see some districts doing that for teachers, right? But what we could afford was a turkey or a ham at Thanksgiving. So we give them a voucher. They go to Brookshire's, and they get a turkey or a ham. You know who appreciated that more than anybody? That the folks, the aides, the bus drivers, the custodians, all those folks. They appreciated that more than anybody. Anything, and, and the board was a big part of that. So anything you can do as a team of eight to show appreciation to your staff. We put together a plan, and a lot of people do it now, I think. But, you know, if they went to a certain number of professional development trainings during the summer, not on the school dollar, we gave them extra money. Certain number of hours. They had to provide the documentation. And it had to be professional development that improved their, I mean, coaches couldn't go to coaching school and get it. But they could go to a classroom, something to improve their classroom. Right? Whatever they were doing in their classroom. If they did that in a certain number of hours of it, they were able to get that extra 500 bucks, whatever it was, depending on what level they hit. So there's certain things you, as a board, can do to encourage and to, to help the professional development of people in your district. That's just one thing we did. Periodically evaluate board and superintendent leadership, governments, teamwork. Do your self-evaluation and be honest. Not just you being you, but how do other people perceive you as a board member? I even did that as a high school teacher. You know, I had students evaluate me. Because I wanted to know what the perception was. I think that was important. Okay? I mean, you take out your outliers, and like you and Belkirk, and you look at the middle. Because you're not going to make everybody happy if you're, if you're running your classroom the way you should. Required trainings. You'll need all these pretty quick, and they can be done online. Texas Open Meetings Act and the Public Information Act. You do this online, takes about an hour each. And, you know, you do a little bit, you answer a question, do a little bit, answer a question. But these are important things to understand and to know. The opens meeting, we'll talk about here in a second. Okay? Texas Open Meetings Act. It applies to government entities when a quorum is present. If deliberation will occur, now understand. For example, a minute ago, we were talking about during a board meeting, you're in Idaho, right? There's some processes involved, but you could actually get popped into that meeting. Go through your school attorney, make sure it's all done the right way. But you can do that if for some reason, extenuating circumstances, you can't be at that meeting. It's always better to be there in person, but if for some reason, it can be done. When a quorum is present, again, like I said earlier, be careful. And make sure it's not the meeting after the meeting. Because there will be a meeting after the meeting. As a superintendent's heading to this car, her car, the board members are over here by their cars, talking. Be careful. Okay? Be careful. When a quorum is present. There's the handbook, again, all that you have in your handout. So let's talk about the types of meetings, alright? You have your regular school board meeting, it's the first Monday, or the first Thursday, or the third Thursday, or whatever it is that you have every month. You can have other meetings in between. Special meetings, emergency meetings, workshops, and hearings, so let's dive into it. There you are, school board meetings. Now, what if Frisco ISD wanted to have a meeting in Tioga? It can happen. Okay? You still got to post it, though. You still got to post it in both places. In both places. So, it's just important that if you meet jointly with another government entity, even a city council, you still need to post the meeting, if you're meeting as a body corporate. Yes, 72 hours before. This is right here. They must publicly be posted 72 hours before the meeting. So, if the meeting's going to be at 6 o'clock on a Thursday, when does the meeting need to be posted by? 6 o'clock on Monday. Okay? By law, it has to be posted. Now, and, and you have to be specific in that agenda and what you're doing. Okay? Now, you may have a situation where you had an emergency. Guess what we just had the other night? We had a storm come rolling through. And I was watching the weather the night, and they had the timeline. I mean, it's amazing how fast it came, went, I mean, people were griping about the warning system, but there wasn't anything to warn about yet. I mean, it happened so fast. But it did, it came through, and we had straight-line winds, and we had torn-up buildings, didn't we? Well, especially if it's during the school year, we got to have a meeting, what are we going to do with these kids? What are we going to do? And under those cases, imminent threat to public health or safety, it must be stated, but you can get it within two hours, or have to have at least a two-hour waiting period. But you can do it within that 72 hours. But it's got to be an emergency-type situation. Alright? When I think about a good friend of mine who was superintendent west down when the fertilizer plant blew up, that's an emergency. Okay? I mean, it happens. It happens. Your open meetings, these are the reasons why you can have an open meeting. Or, I mean, an executive session, closed session. Attorney consultation, you can read them. Let me say this, though. Being real. And if you've already been in one executive or closed session, you may have already experienced this. Sometimes a conversation is always under one of these 11 categories. Just be careful. We'd meet before the meeting, or before the open meeting, to make sure everything was covered, supposed to be covered. 45 minutes later, we'd go out into the open meeting. That's just how we did it. Because if you're not careful, if you move it to the end of the meeting, you go through your open meeting, then you have to have a break for everybody to get a snack, then you go into closed or executive session. That takes 15 or 20 minutes right there. And then, if there's nothing holding all of you accountable, then you might start chasing rabbits. You may end up being there two hours, three, and the next thing you know, it's 11 o'clock. May happen regular for some of us. But, you know, so that's why we do it at the beginning. Okay? That's why we did it at the beginning. That way, you get through with your, when you're done with your open meeting, you're done, you go home. Okay? Again, that's all preference. That's all preference on what people want to do. But just be careful, and most importantly, if you don't hear anything else tonight, hear this. What goes on in that closed meeting stays in that closed meeting. You, it is against the law to talk about what goes on in that closed meeting to the public. And there are board members that like to be in the know. And they like everybody to know that they're in the know. Be careful. Okay, I'm just saying, be careful. Don't repeat what you hear in executive session. Okay? Board meetings are to transact business. Public has a right to be the process, public has no right to intervene or enter into deliberation. Now, understand this. Y'all have a time for public comment. It's set at a certain time, it may be three minutes, it may be five minutes. You do not respond. Let them talk, they're done. Don't argue with them. Don't interact. They just have their right to say what they have to say. If there's a reason for to discuss later, you can discuss later as a board. But just to understand that, you don't interact with them while they're talking. Okay? And then, of course, the verbal and physical disruption of a meeting is a criminal offense. Alright? If somebody goes in there and they are disrupting the meeting, it is a Class C misdemeanor. But again, it's important that they feel like they need to be heard. I'm just telling you, as a school person, and a lot of times even as a board member, people will call and vent to you. And a lot of times, you don't have to say a word, but they know, but they've just been heard. A lot of times with parents, that would happen with me sometimes. They would vent. I never said a word. And when they're done, they say, it'd be a moment of silence, I'd say, well, you're done? They say, yes, thank you for listening. They just want to be heard. Okay? That's all. And a lot of times, board meetings are the same way. People just want to be heard. Okay? Parental complaints, procedures, is your local policy, employee grievance, local policy, UGVA. You see where those are in, in your policy handbook, your policy book. There are procedures, if people have agreements, if they don't like what they got, what they got from the teacher, then go to the principal. If they don't like from the principal, then they go to the next level. Okay? And eventually, it could get to you. You don't ever know what will get to you. Same thing with employee, same thing with the parents. Just understand, that's why it's important to me not to respond, not to, not to get involved emotionally with that situation. They may, they may, they may share with you, but then when they're done, say, have you, that's when you ask the chain of command question. Again, send them back to the chain of command, whatever that is, in your district and in your board. Posting agendas, governments, notices of board meetings, disclosure requirement for certain school district employees and their family members and gifts. All of you have probably already signed your conflict of interest thing. If you haven't, you will. Okay? For gifts of over $250. Alright? Vendors will do that as well. Again, y'all can understand why that would be an issue. PBMAS, special ed, again, these are reports, federal special programs that you will get, if not this meeting, probably next meeting, on how your students did that are under these federal programs and in special ed. Everything from star results to discipline issues. All that will be laid out for you to see. And, and that's, that's, that's some interesting information there. Just let me say this, there has been one change, if I'm not mistaken, and superintendent, correct me if I'm wrong. One of them is the discipline issue on, on some of this. Because it used to be, if you're, if you're, the total, out of the total number of students disciplined in your campus or in your district was greater than the percentage of that subpop, then you could get written up. So in other words, if you're 25% African-American, 25% Hispanic, 25% white, 25% other. If you disciplined by campus and our district, greater than that percentage, then you're out of compliance. Okay? With federal guidelines. That was recently rescinded. What are some of those educational programs? You've got special ed, you've got bilingual ed, special language programs, comp ed programs. Those are fifth and eighth graders that don't pass tests, they can get, there's some extra money there to help with that, to reteach. Educational programs for the gifted and talented, kindergarten and pre-kindergarten programs. And I think what's really cool about the pre-K, and I'm a believer in this, is that especially when the research shows that kids being able to read by third grade is a great indicator on whether or not they're going to be successful when they get through school. And the state of Texas is now going to fund pre-K, full day. If your school district has been doing that in the past, full day, they've only been getting funded for half-day, and you have, as a district, have been eating the cost for the other half-day. But now, they're funding full day. It's a great move. Great. I'm excited about that. I have a son, a grandson out in East Texas, who's, as a kindergartner, is getting ready to go into a dual-language immersion program as a kindergartner. So, science and math are going to be in Spanish. History and English are going to be in English. So it's interesting. I think it's pretty cool, but anyway. I guess I might have to learn Spanish. But anyway, I guess I might have to learn Spanish. Although, he can count, he can count numbers already in Spanish, but anyway. Other educational programs, career and tech. Folks, the House Bill Five back six years ago. Time flies, I guess, when you're having fun. Golly. Totally changed career and tech programs. Again, a great move. They're tougher on small rural districts. They've gotta work with other districts to form consortiums in order to get that done. But it's a great move. Great move. Folks, not everybody's going to college. That's the reality. And we've got to prepare these kids for life after high school. And now, there's actually funding. Now, I'm not a big outcome-based funding person, especially when they wanna tie it to third-grade success on the STAR test. But that didn't happen, so I'm not gonna talk about it. But kids now enrolling in college and the military, I believe, is weighted funding for you. Right, super? I mean, that's part of the new House Bill Three. So, interesting. I mean, I may see how all that shakes out. Career and tech's necessary. Adult community education programs, deaf students. There is a regional day school for the deaf in Austin that a lot of students go to. If that's a special, with being a special ed student, in most cases that is, you do have to provide transportation to that place if they wanna come back and forth as a district. Hey, I don't guess they'll ever jump off sides. Right? They'll go by the movement of the ball. That's what they go by. I bet they light you up in a heartbeat, too. But anyway. Because they can't hear anything. I mean, they'll just hit you and... But no. But if there's a situation where they don't take them down there in Austin, like I said earlier, you have to provide the educational opportunities for that student. Our students, if you have more than, you know, one in your district, and it could be. Drivers ed. How many of y'all took drivers ed in school when y'all were in high school? I even got certified to teach it. My second year in teaching, it was two in classes and two driving. That's what I did, that's part of my schedule. That was pretty cool. Well, sometimes, depending on the driver. I wish they would get drivers ed back in schools. You actually, they do allow it with the liability insurance, and now, with everything they have to have to graduate, it's tough to fit it in there. But again, that is something you can do in public schools now if you want to. Textbooks. You have a list of textbooks that you can adopt. You have campus and district committees that will approve certain textbooks. They'll have the choices. They'll present those to you for approval. Guess what you might have to do, though? Read them, and you might have to find some of those technical... You must go to sleep pretty hard then, because it's... But the reality is, there might be some required reading books for some of your AP courses or pre-AP courses that might, could be controversial. So, you might need to deal with that. So, just understand that. There's a list that are approved by the state, but guess what? That might not be a good book for your local district. That's what you've gotta figure out. Okay? Alternative settings for behavior, student code of conduct. You'll approve that before the school year. What constitutes removal by a teacher? Of course, law says there are certain things regarding that, and that they don't have to be let back in that room until that teacher says it's okay. Again, you have alternative ed programs, and then nowadays, expulsion, it's gotta be pretty serious for expulsion nowadays. Okay? It happened a lot more back in the day. Fighting, you know, that happens. That's the reality of teenagers, right? Well, you just, you used to just go home for three days. Well, you don't do that anymore. Okay? Unless there's a weapon involved. You know, then it's a whole nother deal. But just duking it out, you go to ISS, in-school suspension or something like that. And then, some other things under Chapter Thirty-seven. Protection of buildings and grounds, that's a big deal. Seeing a classroom with all this glass would be unheard of in most school buildings today. But then, there's a lot of school buildings being built now with it. And the reason why? Y'all have a crazy guy's gonna get in the school, they're gonna get in the school. There's not an alarm system or an intercity that's gonna keep them out of there. That's the reality. Okay? And they're gonna do damage. Now, how we stop that from happening can go on for debate, depending on what your belief is on handguns and school marshals and all that. I'm not here to fight that battle for you. But the reality is, you know, do what you can to protect the kids the most you can, and then the public will, if your public doesn't mind having this. I was in a school district over here on the east side of Dallas the other day in their new community school, and every hallway, every classroom has this kind of glass in it, down the whole hallway, every hallway. Okay? So, it's just what the community thinks they want. Okay? Hazing. We've had a few issues with that lately. Okay? I think it's very important that whoever's watching the students, that they are supervised. They have to be, it's important they're supervised. You know, and that's the reality. Back in our day, I mean, they don't do stuff to kids back then that they do now. But still, I mean, the reality is, we gotta keep that from happening. Okay? We just got, we just have to. Planning and decision-making process, adopt a policy establishing district and campus improvement committees. You'll do that. That's part of what you do annually, approve district and campus improvement plans. You'll do that probably, I don't know, superintendent, y'all still doing it in October, September? What's going on right now? They've just gotten all the results, right? And in the process of getting results of all the testing, they now spend the summer getting their plan of action to try to get that better. All right? Then they'll, when the school gets back, then they'll get the plans approved, and they'll be ready to roll. You will approve those. You'll see those, so you'll know. They give you a report, you probably already heard it, some of you, maybe this last meeting, whatever. They provide a report on student performance, and there's a public hearing for that. And it's posted online. Okay? Not individual student performance, but overall student performance by campus and district. And it's gonna be, of course, I'm, now, you gotta understand, I'm a firm believer that once you put the term standardized in it, it's not, I mean, there's nothing standardized about it, because kids aren't standard. Kids are different. Kids have different home situations, life situations. You don't know what they experienced that morning or the night before that test. And there's a whole myriad of things that can go on. But the reality is, is we have a, an accountability system that the state has approved that says, "This is how you're gonna be graded." All right? And whether or not we think it's justified or not, the reality is, it's there. Even if we have a third-grade test that's tested at a fifth-grade level, and it's been proven. But we can't use that as an excuse either. We can't in education. We still have to have high expectations for the kids. I truly believe, with all my heart, kids will rise to the expectations we have for them. I believe that. It's a little harder for some. It's a little bit harder work for some of them, but I believe that. Okay? This is the House Bill Five from the last session. This is a link to the summary of it and for you to look at. Now, we've got a whole new House Bill Three, which has been the, really, the biggest change in public education funding in forever. A long time. Okay? Is it every, is it perfect? No. But it's a step in the right direction. That's the way, that's the way the political system works. It's compromised. That's the way it works. So, some things you like, some things you don't. Next session, we'll see it, and we'll try to improve it even more. Okay? House Bill Three's gonna change up a lot of things. How you collect, how they do their budget from a current-year value, that they're, they're just now getting their preliminary values. They're not even certified. Superintendent, just now getting, and normally, you can expect it to go down from your preliminary values, because people are in the process right now of protesting their appraisal. I mean, I have a son that lives in Brock ISD. His appraisal went up $100,000. So, he's fighting it. You know, I mean, I'm a taxpayer, too. Okay? I understand that. But, but current-year values makes it a lot tougher. And the whole, I mean, it's, the devil's in the details. And it's gonna be interesting to see over the next few months, as things come out. Unfortunately, we got two superintendents in here who have July-one budget date, and some of y'all are, too, and they're trying to guess the best they can. The deal is, they'll have a settle-up at the end of the year, and hopefully, you've guesstimated conservatively, and you don't have to pay back. And bottom line is this, too, and I'll just say this part. Come August the seventeenth, or whatever day that first day of school is, you know what's gonna happen? The door's gonna open, the kids can get there, and guess what the teachers are gonna do? Teach. I don't care if they had a slate and a piece of chalk, they're gonna teach. They are. And they're gonna do a stinking good job of it. Okay? So, let all the higher-ups mess with all that other stuff. We'll take care of the big picture. We let them teach and give them the support they need. Sorry, I got a little, that's one of my passionate things, you know. Here's some things, Senate Bill From the Last Session. You gotta, you'll have to do training on student performance, academic performance. So, just be aware, again, you're gonna have continuous training, and you will have to be, and it will be reported, and it will be made public at the end of every calendar year. Okay? All right. School support, the role of the board in financing educational excellence to oversee the management of the district. This includes oversight of finance and operations. Be familiar with it, understand it. When you approve that budget, it's just gonna be at a function level, what they call a function level. All right? They'll mess with all the lower stuff, but you'll know how much they're using, they're spending on personnel, how much they're spending on, you know, all the, all the basic, all the basic areas. Okay? And you'll, that's what you'll approve. But you'll approve the budget on, say, athletics, but they'll move things around and adjust accordingly on what sport it is and all that kind of stuff. Those are the kind of things that happen. Just understand it. But every month, you get a finance report. Try to educate yourself and ask the questions, "What does this mean?", if you don't know. Okay? You don't wanna be like one district who's having to cut sixty or seventy teachers right now because they weren't vigilant. And that's not necessarily the board's fault, but still, be informed there, okay? And answer, and ask the hard questions. Because let me tell you, I've had to let teachers go back in '08 and '09. That's not a fun thing to do. When you call people in and say, "You're not needed here next year, not because of the job you did, but because we don't have the money," that isn't fun. I'm just, it's not fun. Public education is a state responsibility. The state has, this session, they've taken that back up again. It was gonna be down to 34% of school being funded by the state prior to House Bill Three. Now, I believe it's back up to 48. Okay? A thorough and efficient system is to be provided and substantially financed through state revenue sources. Again, being efficient at the district level, being efficient with what we do. Each student have access to program services that are appropriate to the student's educational needs. Again, educate all kids. Provide the things they need to learn, and then substantially equal to those available to any similar student. Some of you may have children that are challenged in some way, form, or fashion. Okay? You wanna make sure that happens. We all wanna make sure that all kids can learn, in whatever level they need to learn. This really inappropriate anymore because of House Bill Three, but you can see some of the three main sources, local, state, and federal. That's how schools run. You get all three things, state, local, and you have to, you have to show, again, those numbers aren't accurate anymore, so don't pay attention to the numbers. But you have to determine how each teacher's being paid, like I said earlier, whether they're, which funds they're being paid from. Understanding state revenue. Of course, even water's kinda out the door now, but, but you're being funded on the number of students, their average daily attendance. Okay? And they're funded in a weighted way. So, a CTE student gets funded a little bit more for every class, CTE class that student's in. So, for example, if you have an eighth-period day, and you got students in four regular classes, English, science, math, history, an ag class, athletics, I don't know, what'd be another? Robotics, and a computer class. Well, okay, what falls under the, how did that get funded? Well, that student will get funded, say, for that, for that CTE course, we'll say ag, for example. Then they're, they, you get paid more for that one-eighth of a student that's in that weighted class. It's a complicated formula, it's called PEMS reporting. High school principal and a superintendent will vouch with me for this. Your high school principal probably is the toughest, most important job in the district. Your PEMS person is probably your second, to make sure everything's funded correctly, to maximize every bit of money that you can get. Okay? And let me tell you, and it's not getting any easier because of what they're wanting at the state level. There's more and more information they're wanting. That's an important person, and they better enjoy numbers and be a computer geek. And I mean that, because that's what they're staring at all day long. Okay? I talked about earlier, property wealth and tax effort, and all, a lot of this stuff is changing. Consolidation with another district, Tioga, Sam Rayburn, some of the other small, the smaller school districts, there's actually a, in the, in a party's platform to try to consolidate small districts. They wanted to get rid of small districts. Okay? That's real. So, it's important that that happens. It might happen financially, because it has to happen. It might be because a school district is not performing academically over a certain number of years. For example, Lamarck has been taken in by Texas City. I was raised on the coast. I remember Lamarck Cougars, I mean, that was, they were, that was a big deal. But now, they're part of the Texas City School District. They don't exist anymore. So, that happened. So, some of that things, some of those things happened. Detachment of territory, Houston ISD. In order to try to lower their payment through Chapter Forty-One in the past couple, past few years, they've been trying to get rid of, I don't know how it all works, but some of their downtown property, most expensive property, and sent to other people to lower their penalty. All that's changing now with the new law. That's what I'm saying. So, it's a lot of, a lot of this stuff now, when it comes to finances, isn't any different. Federal funds, those are some things you'll see, the different titles, career and tech, special ed, and school lunch program. Your school district gets paid a certain amount of money for every school, for every free-introduced lunch child that parents fill out the form and turn it in, and that's the key. Because elementary kids, it's not normally a problem. But when you start getting to high school, kids don't wanna have the stigma of being on free-introduced lunch because of what happens when they go through the line. So, it's tough. But when you qualify at a certain level for free-introduced lunch, you qualify for a little bit more money in some areas. Okay? There are actually now programs that you can feed dinner to kids, all right? Not just breakfast and lunch. And there are some programs, if you qualify, I mean, they, again, didn't cost anything. I mean, it's just... But guess what comes with federal money? Strings. Right? Such as sugar content. Now, that's been letting up, but let me tell you, you can't beat a good homemade roll from the school cafeteria. Right? Okay? But, and that dreamsicle? But yet, there's some things, the way, now, again, it's been let up a little bit. There's been some guidelines that aren't quite as strict, but it was a sad shame to see the amount of food that kids were leaving on that tray, because it just didn't taste good. And they would just set it aside, and at the time, you couldn't do anything with it. You had to throw it away. Now, there's programs, we can take that and feed it, to give it to folks that, you know, food banks and those kind of folks that need it. But still, you know, I mean, I don't wanna get on that whole thing. But, still, you know, I mean, I don't get on that whole thing either. I mean, you know, it's the school's fault because we, kids are obese. But anyway, I'm sorry, can you sense the sarcasm there? All right, your tax rate. Does everybody understand how you're, how, how you get the tax rate? You have what's called the M and O, your maintenance and operation. You have your INS called interest and sinking or your debt reduction. So if you have debt in your district, you do that, you get, do your INS rate. A formula kind of determines that. M and O, which, again, we have tax compression, again, right now, so your tax rate's dropping. They don't know how they're going to fund it, but it's dropping. Okay? So, and now, that rate will not be able to go up two and a half percent without voter approval. Over two and a half percent. Cities and counties, three and a half. So, we'll see how, again, we'll see how that goes. For those of you that are in fast growth districts, it's going to be interesting to see how you handle that. Because you're growing faster than that percentage rate. So it's going to be interesting. Okay? I think that's something that's going to be revisited next session. I really do. Well, and, and again, this is not the time or place to talk about it, but, but when you look at, you know, the, the new funding formula and when it comes to tying a certain percentage in the salaries, thirty percent's got to be, and then seventy-five percent of that thirty cents got to be, you know, teachers, counselors, nurses, those folks, and twenty-five percent to that other group. Which personally I think is good, because when they were sending five thousand dollars just to teachers and, and counselors, I mean, that bus driver picks that kid up every morning? I mean, there's a whole bunch of people that go into developing that kid during the school day. That just wasn't right. So I think this is a good compromise, but it's based on your basic allotment figure of what we get and how we fund it on basic allotment, which per student. So you take that basic allotment figure and if it goes up, the difference in that has to go toward thirty percent, you know, I mean, thirty percent of it has to go towards salaries. So again, that's, again, that's getting into the weeds for y'all right now, but that's all part of that M and O side. Taxation. Again, process, legal requirements. There's a way to go about setting the tax rate. There's a publication, truth and taxation that, that's out there for your enjoyment to read and, but it is out there. You have your hearing, your rollbacks, your adoptions, all that is a process of which you're doing it. Again, local revenue and state aid. Understand this, you need to understand the short-term and the long-term implication of setting the tax rate. You have some folks, they'll set a tax rate and it'll go down. Like for example, because of growth, whatever, you know, you'll have room in your M and O side to lower the tax rate. You have some folks, hey, we need to lower that. You have some folks say, whoa, timeout. Let's leave it. That'll help us build a fund balance. So that's something you understand the long-term. And let me give you a good example of what I mean by long-term. One of the worst things you can do, sixty to seventy percent of your cost in a district is, is personnel. So if you're a group, district that's growing, you'll need more people. But if your district is dropping enrollment, you end up in a real bad situation if you don't reduce staff. And in rural America, that's happening more so than urban areas. Okay? So, here's an example for your costs and personnel, but then you can see what will happen in, in pretty quick form. If you stayed at two-on-one staff with this many less students, you'd be operating at a fund deficit, a budget deficit. And by law, you're not supposed to operate at a budget deficit. Now you can draw from your reserves, you can draw from your savings account or your fund balance to help balance it. But guess what's going to happen in your first rating? It's going to plummet. Okay? So you've got to be aware of that and you've got to take, Tasby, Region ten, Mark Cahy right here has a guy who's one of the best, we used him in commerce, named Jack Biggerstaff. He's one of the best when it comes to personnel studies. Tasby does it. It costs, but they'll come in and they'll, they'll interview teachers, they'll interview staff, they'll go through and look over your whole personnel and they'll say, all right, you probably can use reductions in these areas. And I tell you, it's better to have an outside person do it than somebody in-house. Because that can be serious stuff. But it can, I mean, it needs to be done. They recommend a certain number of, one assistant principal per three-hundred-and-fifty students, for example. If you've got four-hundred or five-hundred students and only one assistant principal, that's not good. But those are the things you can, they'll do and they'll help you with that. Okay? So it's just not good, because then you're operating, again, you're operating at a deficit. The first rating, I talked about that earlier, please understand this, is going to change in twenty-twenty, twenty-one and it's going, and, and our first ratings will drop, just like they did with teacher appraisals, just like they did with school accountability. It doesn't mean you're not doing a good job. It just means they're finding ways to knock that grade down a little bit. Because I think it's over ninety percent of the school districts state of Texas are superior right now. They say we're not good with our money, but when you look at the first system, school districts state of Texas are doing a great job with their money. The budget is the district's plan to produce educational excesses, excellence in terms of dollars. All right? It addresses three important functions, planning, monitoring, communicating. Planning, monitoring, and communicating. Difference between probationary term, again, not very many continuing, but let me just say this, one thing about personnel. At no other time in the state of Texas do we have more teachers under investigation for whatever reason it might be. When, when an educator, when somebody in your district messes up, the law dictates it and they need to make sure that, y'all need to make sure y'all go by the book, no matter what it takes, to make sure you do everything with an attorney and make sure you cover your ear. Because that's, that's just going, I mean, it's going to happen. You know, in every district in here, you're going to have a situation. It might not always make the news, but you're going to have a situation. And trust me, if the news stations can do it, they're, they're going to get on it. Because they, that's news to them, right? So, you know, my, my goal every day, first day of school was to, the first week of school was not make the news when it comes to kids getting home on a school bus. I tell them that. Because an elementary teacher getting kids on a bus, it's like herding cats. And I gave a new, I'm a secondary guy, so you elementary folks, those kindergarten, first graders and pre-graders getting on a bus? Wow. So, anyway, I digress, sorry. Other operational issues, well, we talked about a little bit. Transportation, right? Transportation. Again, getting kids home. Making sure they're not asleep on the bus when the bus is taken away, right, and put away for the night. All kinds of things, issues on a bus. That bus driver, that they're qualified, how many people in here have enough bus drivers? That's what I thought. There's not enough bus drivers out there, folks. Okay? There's not. But, you've got to find a way, you know, a lot of folks in smaller school districts, it's your teachers, your coaches, those folks do it for extra money. All right? And you build the schedule accordingly. But again, and the way we fund transportation is changing. From whatever linear route means, which I, I mean, what we, they haven't done anything with transportation allotment for schools in years and years and years. But now it's going to per mile, so it's, we hope more money. So we'll see. But transportation, how do you deal with that? Your food service, maintenance custodial, do you do that through a third party or do you do it in-house? In our, by, district I retire from, we hired out custodial and we hired out food service. We didn't hire out transportation because I didn't want to have to buy back buses. Okay? But we did hire out the other two. Now, did we save money? Not in actual dollars, but did we save personnel time and having to hire people? You know, our school folks having to hire people and do all the training and all that, that we saved. Okay? Workman's comp, which you're going to lose on all, almost all workman's comp claims, very rarely you're going to win, and they can do something horrible and you're probably not going to win. So, so all those three things, it's key. But let me tell you, don't go cheap on those. That kid deserves a clean school and a clean room. All right? And so they deserve a clean bus to get on every morning. So those are the things that you need to make sure that you do a good job of in your district as you look at that. And then purchasing and bidding. Tioga, Hal, they're part of purchasing co-ops. And obviously buying power with more people that can purchase, so that's what they do and therefore they don't always have to go by your purchasing guidelines when it comes to under, you know, everything under a certain amount or over a certain amount has to be bid. They, they go, go around that. But trust me, they're going to do the best thing for your district. Okay? And they're, and the different companies are parts of these purchasing co-ops. Roofers, for example, they're part of them. All right? So, just understand that. PMS, I talked about that earlier. I don't think we need to go back through that, but again, it's very important, your PMS person must be, must be important. And let me just close with this. I appreciate you doing this, because it's not going to be an easy job, folks. It's not. Nobody's going to sit here and tell you it's a piece of cake. But you can make a difference for the kids in your district. Bottom line, that's why you're doing it. That's why you're doing it. That's why these guys and that's why your people that are in education are doing it, because they're certainly not doing it for the paycheck. But they're doing it because they love kids. You're not doing this for the paycheck, but I hope you're doing it because you love kids. That's all I've got. Thank you so much for being here and hopefully we'll see it legislative transition.